Good evening, everybody. Calling the Town of Fairfax Planning Commission meeting to order. Consistent with the State of California Executive Order. Numbers N 2520 and N 2920, there will be no in-person fiscal meeting location. The public will be able to view the meeting as follows. You can join at the townoffairfax.org, watch live website on Community Media Center Marin website or Channel 27. You can click on the Zoom link on the agenda. The telephone call and number is 1-669-900-6833 or 1-346-248-7799. The webinar ID is 842-7052-1962. Very good year. Members of the public may provide public comment during the meeting using one of the following options. On Zoom, you can select the raise hand function during the public comment time and you will be unmuted when it's your turn. If you are calling in, please press star nine during the public comment time to raise your hand and star six to be unmuted to speak. And prior to 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting, members of the public may submit written comments to the planning commission. If comments are received after the circulation of the mission meeting packet, but prior to the meeting, they will be sent to the planning commission and will be part of the meeting record, but will not be read aloud. So calling the meeting to order and Linda, if you could give us a roll call, that'd be great.
Okay, Fragoso?
Here.
Gonzalez Parver?
Here.
Green?
Yeah.
Jansen?
Yeah.
Swift?
Here.
Chair Newton?
Here. Thank you. Thank you. We do have one extra commissioner, right? So there would be Brett Kelly was appointed to the commission yesterday by the town council. And I don't believe he's available tonight, so we'll expect to see him at our next meeting.
But your pooch is joining us, so that's, that gets all our chairs taken.
They'll be here all night. So folks have looked at the agenda. If anyone has comments on the agenda or motion to approve the agenda, that'd be great.
I can move approval of the agenda and not hearing any other comments to the contrary.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I heard motion Fragoso, second Swift. And Linda, I'll let you take the vote on this one as well.
I.
Gonzalez Parver?
Hi.
Green?
Hi.
Jansen?
I.
Swift?
Hi.
Chair Newton?
Hi. Okay, I'm going to read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. And the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. And then we will go to public comment on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the commission, they do so by email or in person via Zoom in the manner that I previously described. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established. We'll keep them to three minutes tonight, I think. Conduct. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings in order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation. Of all points of view, members of the audience should limit their presentation to three minutes, provide their comments by email as described previously, state their view and concern succinctly, and submit any new documents to the planning staff first via email to be entered into the record. So I'll pause here and see if there are any members of the public who wish to be heard or I'll ask Linda if we got any emails from members of the public.
No emails.
Hey, I don't see anyone's hands raised. Tamela, you don't see anyone out there, do you?
I do not see any.
Okay, great. So we will close the public comment on non-agenda items and move into consent calendar that has two items on it. We have the continuation of the 403 Cascade Drive matter and election of a chair. That's a second separate thing. So, okay, consent calendar just has the 403 Cascade Drive item. And just make sure there are no comments from any commissioners on the consent calendar. Commissioner Swift?
I had a question for staff. The Planning Commission continued this item to today's meeting. And I just wanted to ask where we are on the Streamlining Act timeframe? Or did the applicant consent to a continuance if we're kind of bumping up against that?
Yeah, we're, we're okay with the PSA as that permit streamlining act, as that works out. It's actually a process if somebody wishes to jump or insist upon the timing. And so we don't have a problem in terms of addressing that.
I can make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Great, thank you. Any second?
I will second.
All right, Linda, we're going to get you to do a voice vote again.
Fragoso?
I.
Gonzalez Parver?
Hi.
Green?
Hi.
Jansen?
I.
Swift?
Hi.
Chair Newton?
Hi. Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody. This is going along so smoothly. We should knock on wood. All right, the next item is the election of the chair, vice chair. Election of a new chair to replace Commissioner Rodriguez, who has resigned. An election of a new vice chair. And I guess I've been acting chair in my role as vice chair up until now. And I see a couple of hands up, so I'll go Commissioner Fragoso, Commissioner Swift, and then Commissioner Green.
Thank you. You typically, in the absence of the chair, the vice chair does become chair, acting chair. I do think that Commissioner Newton has been a very good chair. And I would like to nominate her to be the actual chair of our commission for the remainder of this year. Assuming she agrees.
Thank you. I would accept if elected by the rest of the commission. Commissioner Swift and then Commissioner Green.
I was just going to concur with Commissioner Fragoso. I think acting Chair Newton has been very effective as chair in the past. And she's got all the tools to move us through this year. So I would concur with Norma's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Swift. Commissioner Green?
Yes, I also, as far as what Commissioner Fragoso said, here, here. Yes, I agree.
Should I, oh, I'm sorry, through the chair, I'm not sure if there are other comments on this item. I could make that a motion whenever you are ready for it, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'll let you go ahead with that then, Norma. Thank you.
All right, I move that Commissioner Newton be appointed Chair of the Planning Commission for the remainder of this calendar year.
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez Parver for the second. And Linda?
Okay, Fragoso?
I.
Gonzalez Parver?
I.
Green?
Hi.
Jansen?
I.
Swift?
Hi.
Chair Newton?
Hi. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate the confidence. And I'm really, you know, not happy that Commissioner Rodriguez resigned. I was looking forward to her filling out this year as our chair. And I am looking at the bright side, and it's a shorter year than I would have planned. So that'll be okay with me, too. I am also interested in seeing a vice chair. Commissioner Fragoso?
Thank you. I, I'm, I'm not sure if it is acceptable, but I would like to volunteer to be vice chair for the remainder of this year if there are no other commissioners put forward.
I love that, a self-nomination. You know, I'm all in favor. Just to catch people up, just a little background. I was the chair in 2018 last, and Commissioner Swift was the chair in 2019. And Commissioner Green was the chair in 2020. And I think Norma as vice chair would be, you know, a good path here. But I'll look for a nomination, a motion and a second, unless there are other comments.
Having nominated myself, would it be better if someone else? Having volunteered, would it be better if someone else nominate me or how? What do you think?
Sure.
Maybe I can take the honors for that. I would nominate Commissioner Fragoso to be vice chair.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming that's a motion?
Sorry, that is a motion, yes.
Okay.
My first one.
Your first? And is there a second?
I'd like to second that.
Okay, Commissioner Gonzalez Parver, second. Thank you. Linda?
Hey, Fragoso?
I.
Gonzalez Parver?
Hi.
Green?
Hi.
Jansen?
I.
Swift?
I.
Chair Newton?
Hi. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
You know, as long as we don't have to arm wrestle over this, I think this way of keeping the leadership continuity going is great. So I appreciate everybody doing that. We're so civilized. And we'll go to our first public hearing item on 85 Bellinas Road and the sign.
Hey, so at the May 20th, 2021 meeting, the commission continued this matter and directed the applicant to provide the following prior to this meeting. An arborist report subject to peer review by the town arborist. They asked, you directed the applicant to erect a mock-up of the sign and the proposed dimensions and the proposed location, and to revise the project drawings to include a dimension site plan calling out the distance between the sign and the fence and the sign and the nearest redwood tree, a dimensioned elevation showing the exterior downlight fixtures to be mounted on the sign, including the lighting cut sheet, cut sheet showing the fixture is dark sky compliant and providing the color temperature details. They've done all this. I apologize, I was unable to get a written, written peer review from the town arborist, but I spoke with him tonight and earlier this afternoon. What he told me is that signs can definitely be installed very close to redwood trees without negatively impacting them. He did want, you know, when you do take action on this, he wanted a condition put in place, and I'm going to read it to you, that the applicant shall mark the center of the signpost, their circumference and how deep and where the power line for the lighting will be brought from in the field. And we're recommending prior to the July 15th, 2021 meeting, the town arborist shall probe the affected areas to determine if any large roots exist in those locations and recommend where the footings and power supply line can be relocated if any large roots are encountered in the field. The sign footings and the electrical supply line installation shall be constructed per his recommendations with the project arborist, Dr. Kent Julin, observing the installation and verifying in writing that they were installed per the town arborist specifications. It was brought to our attention that we missed something in reviewing this sign. And Tamela, I would like to share my screen right now, if I could.
Yes, you may.
Okay, now I have it open. There it is. Can you guys see that section of the code?
Not yet.
We don't see your screen yet.
Oh, I see. Okay, here we go.
Here it comes.
Okay, so. So basically, the town code says that if you have freestanding signs there to maintain a 10-foot setback from the right-of-way. Okay, and this is, this gets kind of complicated, so listen carefully. We measured the right-of-way and on this property, two feet of the sidewalk is actually on this property. It's not part of the right-of-way. So they're proposing the sign four feet from the edge of the right-of-way. So they do require that you guys grant an exception to that section of the code, right? And your, your code gives you, didn't bring me up what I thought it was going to. Hang on. Uh-oh. Okay, I'm just going to have to tell you. So your code allows you to grant exceptions to that section of the code. So you're able to allow freestanding signs to be closer to the edge of the right-of-way if you grant an exception to that requirement. So we did not discuss that required exception in our staff report, and we didn't put it in the notice. So we're recommending that this item be continued so that we can notice it properly and get that condition that we just talked about into the code. I also wanted, in the staff report, I pointed out, because some people were very concerned about the size of this sign. But when you read the code, the, the support framing for a sign does not count as part of the sign square footage unless somehow the support advertises the business. And I don't believe that this frame, that the signs, that the 26-square-foot sign is going to hang in, advertises the business in any way. So I, I believe that staff will be able to make the required findings to support the sign being four feet from the edge of the right-of-way instead of the required 10 feet. I believe that this property has 175 feet of frontage on Bellinas Road. Most of the sites are like 50 feet wide, and the commission granted a similar sign, maybe one foot from the edge of the right-of-way for 31 Bellinas Road that has businesses in the back that can't really be seen from Bellinas Road. So it's very similar to what was granted just down the street for 31 Bellinas Road. So that being said, we have to discuss it in the staff report, and we have to notice it that way. And the applicants understand that, so they've, they've agreed to a continuance. I spoke with Ray Moritz tonight, and he believes that he can do this probing prior to the July meeting so that you'll know if there's any kind of an issue with the sign having to shift over from one side to the other to try to avoid the roots. He does not agree with Dr. Kent Julin's assessment that large roots can be cut if they're cut cleanly. He believes they need to be avoided, but he believes it's perfectly, that they're going to be able to do that if he does this probing to determine where the large roots are. So we're recommending that this item be continued to the July, I think it's 15th, meeting so that those things can be accomplished and we can get everything into the staff report discussing that setback exception. Now we can conclude our report.
Thank you. I see a couple of hands up, so we'll start with Commissioner Green, and we'll go to Commissioner Jansen, and then Commissioner Fragoso.
Mr. Green?
Okay, thanks. Just a detail that isn't not clear to me because I'm not an architect. And is this sign appears to be eight feet wide overall? And from the sort of base of the, so up from the supports themselves, there's the first cross member, the first horizontal member, and from there to the top appears to be about four feet, 10 inches. Is that right? So, so the kind of overall frame is eight feet by four feet, 10 inches? Is that the dimension?
No.
I'm not sure.
The frame is, I thought, eight feet by eight feet. But the sign itself, if you read your definition of how you determine the sign square footage, you draw a rectangle around the sign lettering. So it doesn't include that frame. That's not part of the sign. The, the frame can only be included as part of the sign square footage if the frame somehow advertises the business, and it doesn't. It's just a wood frame with the address on the top.
I know, but as a mass thing, I'm not worried about compliance with the statute for the moment, the ordinance. I'm just, as a mass, the, the, the sort of this framed-in section, the upper part, forgetting the legs it stands on for a second, that appears to be moved by four foot, 10 inches.
Oh, yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. That's all. That was my question.
Okay, Commissioner Jansen?
Thank you. Yeah, I, so the mock-up, I think, is very helpful. If you see it on paper, it's relatively large, but within context, it seemed to make sense. It's quite a large building as well. Regarding the setback, I think the applicant is, they are looking for placing a sign so it is legible. And because in the urban environment, all the buildings and all the other signs are basically at the progress line, at the curb side, pushing it back basically would put the sign almost behind the trees, defeating the purpose. So I think within this context, it makes a lot of sense that the sign is closer to the public right-of-way, unlike, for instance, when you have a green field or along a road somewhere. So I think the, what I'm looking at, to me, looks, you know, proportional, reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a matter of process, my usual request is that we start out with any questions of staff before we get into any kind of deliberation, just FYI. So I'll go to Commissioner Fragoso and then Commissioner Swift.
Thank you. A question for Linda. So Linda, just so I understand clearly, are you saying that the eight-by-eight-foot sign, that dimension of eight feet by eight feet, does that include the posts or, or does that exclude the posts?
I believe it includes the posts.
Okay, that's, that's great. If it includes...
It's not, yes, it's 96 by 96, the frame.
The frame itself, the overall frame?
Not the sign.
So it's within the eight feet, and it was, in this reiteration, it was moved closer to the fence, right? I believe it was moved, it seems to be closer to the fence than the last drawing, which was not very clear. So I do appreciate that it's close to the fence rather than further back towards the trees. And I thank the applicant and Mr. Moritz for their work to clarify these questions for us.
Okay, Commissioner Swift, do you have a question for staff?
I do have a question for staff. Can you repeat where the public right-of-way is on that property again for me?
Yeah, so the edge of the public right-of-way is two feet towards the paved road. So two feet of the sidewalk closest to the building, kind of where the second floor overhangs. That's not public right-of-way. That's their property. So whenever this building was built, maybe part, one of the requirements was that they pave an extra-wide area of sidewalk along their frontage because the sidewalk extends to the footprint of the building, but the actual property line is two feet out from that footprint. Does that make sense?
So the property line goes into the sidewalk space?
It is two feet into the sidewalk, correct.
And the public right-of-way?
Is 50 feet wide.
Is how far into the property?
The public right-of-way is two feet from the, from the curb line towards the street. That's where the public right-of-way line is. If you stand and looked down this building, you see the second floor overhang that lines right up with all the buildings up and down Bellinas Road. So the property line is at the face of the second floor of this building. And the first floor, the first floor is set into the property, two feet.
Commissioner Swift, it's confusing because when you think about public right-of-way, that's a, that's something that exists on paper. I mean, it also exists as a physical location. But the public right-of-way in this case is coterminous with the boundary of the property. What's fluid and a little bit unusual is the location of improvements. Typically, public improvements like sidewalks are located entirely within the public right-of-way. But we believe that in this instance, the public improvements actually extend into the private property. So the public improvements are outside the public right-of-way and encroaching into the, into the private property.
Okay.
Two feet, yeah. So the sign is actually proposed four feet from the property line, not the required 10. But it's not just two feet from the edge of the sidewalk because the side, the property line is two feet into the sidewalk area.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez Parver?
Yes, Linda, can you give us that code section again? Can you cite that code section that talks about signage?
Which, which one? The one that talks about the 10-foot setback or the one that talks about the frame not counting towards the sign?
Both.
So if you look in your staff report, the definition of an area of, of a sign is 17.064.0201. And it defines the area of a sign to be the area in square feet of the smallest rectangle enclosing the entire exterior surface of a sign. Okay, and it goes on to state, "If any structural element which supports a sign is designed, painted, or otherwise arranged so as to substantially contribute to the advertising qualities of the sign, the structural elements shall be included in the smallest rectangle used to compute the area of the sign." I don't believe that support framing rises to the level of adding to the sign advertising. So.
Okay.
Yeah, our definition isn't as clear as some I've seen. As Commissioner Green noted, you're almost doing two separate calculations. One is the sign area and one is the mass and bulk of the entire frame of the sign. I've seen other definitions that talk about the surround and things like that. But for purposes, you know, as, as Commissioner Jansen noted, with the, with the story poles, or not story poles, but the framework up in a quite detailed manner, you can really get a sense of both the area of the sign face as defined in our code and the overall size of the sign structure.
You know, when I look at that building, it has huge beams. You know, when I look at that building, it has huge beams that are part of the architecture of the building itself. And I, I think the frame, you know, goes with the building. I think something too insubstantial. Would look odd and out of place next to that building that has those huge crossbeams as part of the architecture.
Thank you.
Okay, so my question is. Is there a limit on the. Sign face square footage. This says we have a twenty. Square foot sign face. And I don't understand what the, if they're, they're looking for. An exceedance of the permitted. Sign face area.
Hang on.
For some reason, I sixteen square feet sticks in my head, but I don't know where I saw that. And that's why I was so concerned if we're seeking a variance from a square footage. Maximum square footage, that needs to be clear.
Well, that's, that's sixteen oh six, seventeen oh six four oh five oh. Two, A two, projecting sign shall not exceed sixteen square feet.
Yeah, so.
I don't know if this is projecting sign or not.
So the section number that applies to this additional identification sign for like a shopping center or a building that has multiple uses in it. Is seventeen point zero six four point zero five zero C. Okay, and it says that you can have, in addition to the number of signs permitted above for each business, each business is allowed to have two identification signs. As long as one is a projecting sign. One additional identification sign may be permitted for a shopping center. Where there is any combination of five or more businesses on a single commonly owned or leased parcel with common access and parking. This has twelve businesses and they all share the parking lot. The total area of the additional signs shall not exceed one hundred square feet. And this is twenty.
Is that sign? Face or is that total?
Total area of the additional sign shall not exceed one hundred square feet. That's.
Total area, not just the face, but the total area.
The, the total area of the additional sign. So it's underneath, it's additional numbers. One, you're allowed to have a sign for a shopping center. Right? And right underneath that is two, the total area of the additional sign. Singular.
Sign.
One hundred square feet.
All right. Thank you. It's clear.
It's not saying that when you add up all the signs on the building, the total can't, can't exceed a hundred.
That's not my question. You started out by differentiating the total area of the sign from the sign face. You know, it's not included in this. Face area. The, the structure around where the lettering is unless that structure has lettering and advertising as well. So I'm trying to understand our reading of the code. But it's pretty moot for this one, so I don't think it exceeds a hundred square feet. Regardless of whether you're looking at the face, which is twenty, or the entire sign area.
Right.
So I wasn't trying to add other. I was just trying to clarify the code and what it means. And since there are no other questions of commissioners, I'm going to open. The public hearing. And see if there are any members of the public or we've got the applicant here and. Thank you very much for agreeing to put this off again.
I forgot that I. Told this, told the applicant that if the commission is willing, if you could give them an idea of who might support this location. Because if, if the location isn't going to fly, they might. I don't know, consider moving it back to ten feet. They don't want to do that. They want it in the location where it is, but.
We can take a straw poll after we hear from the public.
Thank you.
But first, do the applicants wish to say anything else in addition before I open it up to other members of the public?
And I have unmuted Harry Hunt and Robert Sanders. Mr. Sanders has his hand up. Please go ahead.
Hello, am I heard? Unmute, mute? Okay, so, um, you know, we worked really hard to get right back to you and did a full court press to. Do the posts and the maps and the arborist report and. So being an ex-city planner and seeing a lot of projects through my life. I think this is just a directory sign and I know it needs to be the right scale and I thought my rendering. That put the sign in the actual place over the story polls kind of really told the story. Because it's gray and attractive and it does have those heavy posts to reflect the architecture of the building. So I'd kind of like to get through the idea that the sign is a pretty good design. It's got really only sixteen square feet in the middle where the tenants are. We need that space. And we're trying to really fit in to the architecture, the colors and not, you know, bring you a great sign. Because if we brought you a, a sign with a couple of three and a half inch square posts. It could be quite ugly and not, not a great sign. The, so in my feeling is that the four feet is great in that. We're away from those redwood trees. We support everything the arborists, yours and ours have said. So just going down the list of concerns, I think we did a great job. We're just looking for your support on this exception, which I don't think is that big a deal. So anyway, if you have any questions for me or Harry, let me know.
Great, thank you very much. Do commissioners have any questions of the applicant at this point? I don't see anybody's hands, so. Tamela, let's open this up for a public hearing. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item. Please raise your hands. Oh.
I see a commissioner, but I see no members of the public with hands raised.
All right, Commissioner Gonzalez, Harper, did you have a question for the applicants?
Yes, I did. I was just, I was going over the arborist report and I'm looking at. Said page two, one, two, I guess, attachment B, the third page. Second paragraph, it talks about tree one. I'm assuming. Okay, I'm assuming that the rules for tree one. As far as the distance, like the setback. Applied to tree two. It's talking about seven and a half feet and ten feet, I guess, like a setback from a radial. Setback, is that, am I reading that correctly? Am I to assume that the ten feet and a seven-five applied to both trees?
Can you answer that?
Please do, thanks.
Okay, so on the left side, the tree to the left is about eight feet. To the edge of the post and ten feet to the other side. So the left side is ten and the other side. The eight, the eight is on the left, the ten is on the right, and then the other tree. Is seventeen and thirteen set quite a bit back. And these are the measurements and the distances that the arborists provided and I double-checked it. So it's.
Okay.
Not the middle of the sign.
Okay.
But could I add to that? Because our town arborist has told me that the signs can be even closer as long as you don't cut large roots. The town has signs that have been replaced that are closer to redwood trees than this sign is going to be. Ray Maritz was not concerned as long as the, he does the probes and the footings and the electrical line don't. Result in the cutting of any large roots. That's not an issue for him.
So then to the applicant, if you had a choice, would you? Set it back even further from the property line?
Um, no, we, we, we had it at three feet, but the two feet is fine. Because it's further away from the, the trees. So we thought that was a bonus. We did not.
Okay.
Back issue.
Okay, so. The reason I'm asking is just that originally before we had the dimensions. I was envisioning that it was set back a little bit further back, kind of nested back. Further from the fence, which I like better. I think where it is now is fine. I, I would support that. Setting it back a little bit more if the roots permit, I think.
That would be fine, three feet.
Yeah.
Either way, I don't, that's fine with us.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think it would be a little bit softer. You know, it's just a little bit more gradual transition back.
I think.
Okay, so you are open to pushing it back a foot if, if, if it's allowed.
And it said that would make the setback five feet then. So we get a little more relief on that issue.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a nicer buffer, I think. I mean, I went by there a couple of times and saw it and it's like, well, you know, okay, you know, I, I think I would support it. But if, if there is a choice, I think it would be nicer to push it back. Thank you.
Thank you, and I see Commissioner Fregoso and then Commissioner Green.
Thank you. Actually. I, I have the opposite opinion of Commissioner Gonzalez. I, I like it. Closer to the fence. I like it where it is. I would even, wouldn't mind if it were closer. Though there may be some utility right at the edge of the sidewalk. So I'm happy to leave it at two feet. It gives plenty of space for the trees. And, and I just want to thank the applicant for doing this additional work to clarify for us. I'm, I'm very happy where it is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Green, do you have questions for the applicant? Because I still have a hearing open here and I want to close it. If we're going to get into discussion and opinions, but if you have a question for the applicant, please go ahead.
No, I will, I will wait for discussion at this point because what's been discussed with the applicant, I also had issues, so.
Okay, well, you'll be first on my list when we. Close the hearing. Are there any other questions for the applicants from commissioners? And we'll just check the public one more time and make sure we don't have. Any members of the public with their hands raised who'd like to speak. I don't see any. So I am going to close the public hearing now and open it up for. Commissioner discussion and Fisher Green, you're up first.
Okay, so on. The, the sign where it is, two feet. I'm looking at the story polls. Certainly works better if you're for the traffic driving by, you know, and it has a dual function this sign. I think it's a little bit massive for people walking on the sidewalk though. So if it were back a little bit further, that would be good. And this discussion with. Commissioner Gonzalez Barber and Fregoso, I think we suggest an answer here to that positioning issue. Maybe we could say between two feet and three feet, depending, I mean, we may find a sweet spot regarding the roots. And I think we need to go back to our town arborist. And see where that might be. So there might be, I would say, maybe we can leave it to. Discovery by the arborist of, you know, maybe two feet is better for the trees, maybe three feet will work. Because of the massive aspect of the sign. As close as it is, and maybe we can get there that way on the distance. But I'm good with it, the way it was redesigned and I really appreciate the applicant going out there and to the arborist and getting a thorough report. Some aspects of the conclusions and recommendations I was thinking would become possibly a condition to the. Rezo here, but we want to be careful what we say about. Cutting any large roots apparently. So as it's, as it is right now. Where it says, you know, any roots that are encountered, cut with a clean sharp saw or clippers. Maybe not, you know, we need to find, there's still that question. So I think the idea here was to continue this. And I'm kind of aboard that, you know, I'm bored with that idea for this tonight. And those are my thoughts and comments. I think we're going to get there though.
Well, and I'd like to hear from the rest of the commissioners. So at the applicant's request, I guess. I, I do want to hear if anyone is just thinks this sign is going nowhere. Or. Does everybody sort of feels, Commissioner Reed indicated that, you know, we'll get there. And I'll start with Commissioner Swift, then Commissioner Gonzalez Barber, and then Commissioner Fregoso.
So I appreciate all the efforts that the applicant has made, but. I don't think I could make findings. In the sign code for the sign where it is now. I think it is. Too large in that spot and it also blocks the view of the redwoods. But. I also don't know since we've got new information tonight. And that our town arborist is going to do some work before the next meeting. Where in actuality, the sign may be placed or, or the options for it to be placed. So, you know, I support the continuance to see where we go with. The arborist's work.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez Barber.
Yes, I, I too appreciate very much all the extra effort. I'm a little bit more comfortable with this now. And I have to say again, this, this is a beautiful sign. I think it fits right in. With not just the building but Fairfax, you know, so I think this is one of the better signs I've seen come before us. But I think Commissioner Green's point about the pedestrian scale is a very good one. Driving by, you know, I, you know, I thought, okay, you know, I would have liked a little bit further back, but walking by there. I think it does kind of tower over. The little people. So I would just say the most, I guess, in terms of what the arborist finds during the probe. If we have different opinions, I would say the most stringent. Determination should govern. So, you know, if it's two feet, okay, if it's three feet. That's better, but I, I think I could support this depending on what the arborists find.
Thank you. Commissioner Fregoso.
Thank you. I believe. The current location. Which is two feet back. From the fence, right? Is, is a good place, assuming. Mr. Moritz goes out and doesn't find any, any large roots and, and I also agree. That the report or the rezo should be changed. Not to say any roots found can be cut, but to allow Mr. Moritz to make that determination. And I would also say two other things. One, I think that. It's a big sign, but it's a gigantic building. it's a big sign, but it's a gigantic building. And because the building itself sits forward more, particularly the mass of it appears more forward than the sign. I think the visibility for that sign for people driving by would be better in its current location rather than moving it back. I think being a bit closer to the sidewalk, I would be willing to make the exemption that's required. Because I believe the visibility for drivers coming from either direction uh, would be better. You could see it a, a, a little further back. You can kind of see it a block back rather than having to be right on it. Uh, to see it stop and make a turn. So, uh, I, I agree with the two feet, again, assuming the arborist uh, review finds that's a safe place for the trees. And I'm wondering if we have basic agreement. We're willing to do the exception. We approve the sign, which in fact, the actual square footage of the sign uh, is only about three by six, the, the actual lettering of the sign. I'm wondering why it needs to come back to us. I think we've been, uh, given a good amount of information, whatever is pending is up to, uh, Moritz to make the determination of to dig the trenches, see where those roots are. Assuming this works, doesn't endanger the trees. I don't see, uh, well, except that you would need to, uh, would staff need to re-notice this? With the exception, is that the reason it needs to come back to us?
The public wasn't, I, wasn't notified at the sign.
I got it. Is there some way it could come back on consent? Or a more limited review to save some time at the next commission meeting?
Well, that's a P two. I mean, it, it can't go on consent. Our attorney has told us that anything that's discretionary permit cannot be.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm fine as it is. I prefer it just as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fragoso. I think, uh, given all the the statements so far, uh, the applicant may be scratching their head a little because we're all a little over the, you know, little all over the table here. Commissioner Jansen, do you have any additional comments you'd like to make about this?
No, I apologize. I spoke prematurely, but no, I'm, I'm comfortable the way it is. It is a design. It seems to balance all the different interests very well. So I would be okay to approve it right now, but unfortunately there is a glitch.
Okay, and I'll give you my, uh, two cents as well. Um, I also tend to believe it's too large. Uh, just visually, uh, I like the idea of stepping it back another foot. Uh, just to, if possible, but I agree with Commissioner Green that uh, let's see what happens with, uh, the probe. I understand, Linda, the probe would be happening between now and the, and the next meeting that we would hear this at, right?
Ray Moritz said he could get it done.
Great. Um, so, you know, I, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Green that if we're going to allow this, uh, it'll probably be dictated this precise location by the trees roots themselves. And I'm happy to live with what they decide. So, uh, that's my feedback. And if we could, uh, maybe somebody could come up with a motion to continue this. Commissioner Fragoso.
I would like to move that we continue this item. Uh, I believe the main concern of the applicant is whether we are willing to provide that exemption. And everyone seems to be in concurrence with that of the right of way.
I don't think that's the proper characterization of what we heard.
Okay, if I leave that out and I just move to continue and it'll come back and we can decide then, how about that?
That sounds like.
Let's move this along.
Uh, second from Commissioner Green. So Linda, if you would take a vote.
Okay, Fragoso.
I.
Gonzalez Parver.
I.
Green.
I.
Jansen.
I.
Swift.
Hi.
Karen Newton.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you all very much. And thank you to the applicant. And we are moving right along. It's not, it's just eight o'clock. It's so exciting. We're going to go on to our next item. Uh, 183 Tamil Pious Road. And that's just the way I pronounce it, but I was informed in Marin. Do you guys know how you pronounce it? Tamil Pious.
That's how I say it.
I pronounce it. How do other people? Shall I give my staff report?
Please.
Okay. So the project encompasses a deck addition on the second floor of this structure. Um, extending out over the existing lower floor deck. The proposed second deck is not as deep as the lower floor, floor deck with its outermost eastern edge stepped back three and a half feet from the lower floor deck's eastern edge. The project requires a use permit because, uh, the site doesn't meet the minimum size and width requirements based on its 50% slope. It's very steep. The existing lower deck provides approximately 243 square feet of usable, usable outdoor living space, but it's only accessible through the master bedroom. The 50% slope of the site makes providing other usable outdoor space difficult and likely in conflict with the town's hill area residential development permit ordinance due to the amount of grading that would be required to create a level area, area on a 50% sloped site. Uh, the project also requires a combined side yard setback variance. The deck will comply with the minimum five foot setback requirement. But because of the narrow width of the site, um, the existing house was built with a variance of the combined side setback granted by the planning commission previously. So the deck would follow the lines of the existing house and it would not project out beyond the existing deck. Construction of the deck will require the removal of no trees, um, and it will not project any closer to the neighboring residences at 175 and 185 Tamil Pious Road than the existing improvements. It's common throughout the steep hillside areas of Fairfax for residences to have rear decks off all the levels of the house on both the upsloping and downsloping properties. I walked up there and was able to identify on a brief walk, you know, one, two, three, four other houses that had a similar deck configuration. We did, uh, speak with the owner and visit the property at 185 Tamil Pious, which is the house that's closest to this proposed deck. And we viewed the project site from the rear deck of that property. And due to the close proximity and the difference in elevation between the existing deck at 185 Tamil Pious and the proposed second floor deck, we've included a condition which the owner of 185 Tamil Pious said would, would satisfy him. That the second floor deck include a six foot privacy screen on the south side of the deck, subject to the review and approval of the planning department prior to issuance of the building permit. We didn't receive any comments from any other agencies. So we're recommending that you approve the proposed deck addition by adopting resolution 2021 dash 14, setting forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval. That would conclude our report.
Thank you, Linda. And Commissioner Fragoso, do you have a question?
Thank you. I do have a question for staff. Uh, Linda, can you clarify? I think I heard you say that the existing residence already has a reduced combined setback. And so the current deck, the current proposed deck does not change that existing already combined setback any further, right? Does not reduce it any further.
That's correct.
Okay, and so, uh, I don't have a problem with that. Thank you for that clarification.
Uh, Commissioner Swift, do you have a question for staff?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Um, the reso identifies the plans as date stamped 2021, but the plans are date stamped 2020.
Yeah, that's, that should be 2020, not 2021.
On the reso.
Yes.
Okay, and then my other question is the sequel code.
Oh, yes, thank you. You brought that to my attention. The second sequel code should be eliminated from the first box on the staff report because that exemption only applies to properties that have less than a 20% slope. So it should just be this, it's categorically exempt per section 15301A. And we're removing that second one.
And this project also entails, um, the doors to the deck and the outdoor lighting, correct?
Correct.
Right. That's it.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, uh, are the applicants present? Do we want to add them to our panel and, uh, see if they want to let us know anything or if we have any questions? Hello.
Hello. Uh, thank you, Commission members and thank, um, Principal Planner Neil for, for patience with us because, uh, it was my wife and I who filed this, uh, permit. And, uh, and it was our first time doing it. So it was a learning process for us. And Linda was very patient and we appreciate that. Um, but I, I think Linda did a really good job of giving an overview of the project. Um, we have, uh, as a family, uh, it's my wife and, and two boys. We've lived in Fairfax since 2006. And our, uh, 14, 15 year old boy, he now is going to Drake. Um, so we've been in this house for a number of years and, um, it, it's a of square feet. And, um, we, we love living in this house and, and we really feel that adding this additional living space on the top floor would give our family a little bit more room. And we have a, a 14, 15 year old, but we also have a seven year old. So there's a lot of need for people to get, um, uh, so anyway, I, I, I just really appreciate you guys going through this, taking time. Um, we, you know, over the years, we thought about how we can make this house work for our family, our growing family. And we've always considered, well, can we you know, expand the footprint of our building? And then we can't because of the slope and, you know, the limited, uh, space of our lot. And, and this really is the only alternative we see to expanding our livable space. And, um, and, and really making our house work. So we can get through the, the next few years as our kids grow up and um, and we don't drive each other crazy. Um, but that's, that's about it. And again, thanks, uh, Principal Planner Neil for giving such a good overview of everything.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay.
I would add that, um, I know that, uh, um, Linda was able to speak with our neighbor about the six foot privacy screen. And I, I think that's actually a great idea. I think it, it would be good for our neighbor at 185 Tamil Pious. Um, but I think we would appreciate that as well, you know, as far as, um, uh, giving ourselves privacy. But also, uh, we wouldn't feel uncomfortable if we were on the deck and intruding on our neighbors' quiet. So we're, we're in agreement with that. If, if this is an acceptable project to the, uh, the planning commission.
Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, Senior Planner Neil is the best, really. So, uh, we're very lucky to have her here. Commissioner Green, do you have a question for the applicant?
Yes, um, so you have kids, I'll have friends over and this is an upper deck. And I just want to ask what your, I find a very, um, let's say, undetailed. So I have, have to find out what you're doing with the edging and preventing falls and that type of thing, safety.
Yeah, well, we would obviously have, um, the railings built to code. And, um, and from that standpoint, I feel like the, the edgings would be um, safe and we, I do not have fears of our kids or, or, um, friends of the kids climbing over the edge. So I, I do not have concerns about that as long as it's built to code and, um, built to standards. I don't know if you're suggesting we do more to protect, uh, visitors or our kids?
No, it's just that it's hard to tell what is, what is going to be the picture from the plans. But I understand.
Justin, isn't the, aren't you just going to match the deck to the lower deck? The railing is going to be the same railing, right?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, sorry. If that, that's the question. Um, it would be a, a picket style railing. Um, and, and so it would be very similar to the lower deck, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fragoso, do you have a question for the applicant?
Uh, not a question so much as the comment. I think, uh, your application was, was very clear and straightforward. Your plans while not uh, very elaborate, I think are also very clear. The construction of the pickets, uh, is very clear. Your framing, uh, deck railings are required to be, uh, specific dimensions that will be closely checked by building. Uh, I think, uh, given the last couple of years we've been through, uh, I spent two years, uh, trying to develop a little outdoor space. I think, uh, this will be lovely for you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for the applicants before we see if we have any public comment? Commissioner Gonzalez Parver.
I actually have, I guess it's more of a comment than a question, just to, uh, Commissioner Green's comment about safety. Um, I think when this gets vetted by building, they will ensure that, um, the new pickets meet code. Which means that you can't pass a year more than four inches in diameter. So little, little kids would not through it. So I, I, I think this just, you know, it may not end up matching what's going on below, but I think that's up to building to enforce that.
Thank you. Um, seeing no other hands raised for, uh, questions for the applicant. I'm going to open up the public hearing to the public and see if, uh, anybody wants to weigh in on this. Please raise your hand and let us know that you would like to speak. And Pamela, I don't see anyone with their hands raised, do you?
I affirm that. I do not see any hands raised.
All right, uh, I will then close the public hearing. Uh, thank you, Mr. Sobiraj. I'm not sure if I'm saying your last name correctly, but, uh,
Sobiraj.
Tobira?
Sobiraj, yeah, so it's a tough one.
Thank you very much.
Beautiful.
You're welcome.
Um, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission for discussion. Uh, would anyone like to start?
I would be prepared to make a motion if there is no further discussion.
I don't see anybody else with their hand raised, so why don't you have at it?
Okay, and let's see how it goes. I move approval of um, 183 Tamil Pious Road, APN number 00105318. A deck addition to an existing single family resident, a use permit and combined side setback variance, application number 21 dash 12. And I move that we approve it.
Great. Is there a second?
My second.
Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Swift, uh, I think, uh, Commissioner Gonzalez Parver beat you to the second unless there was something else you were trying to do.
No, I wanted a friendly amendment to that.
What?
And I couldn't get my little hand up.
Let's hear what your friendly amendment is.
So it would be, um, a correction to page two. Under the whereas to change the date from, uh, April 7th to 2020. And then since this application is going to include outdoor lighting, I would like to add a dark sky compliance related condition to it. And I was thinking of just having that as number two. On page two, under one, which discusses the privacy screen. And my draft language on that would be all lighting shall be dark sky compliant to include compliance with color temperature to minimize blue rich lighting and shall limit light spillage beyond the areas necessary to light the outdoor patio and shall avoid direct off-site illumination. And a lighting plan should be submitted with a building permit application and be approved by the planning department prior to issuance of the project building permit.
Could you somehow, sorry, could you somehow work that into my condition 11, which has some of those things covered?
Also, through the chair, the plans, section two of the floor plan, deck plan clearly specifies there are only two lights, and they are dark sky compliant light fixtures. But there were a couple of other minor details in your friendly motion, which I would be happy to accept.
Now, I don't see on what I have, REZO 202114, I don't see a number.
Oh, maybe I'm looking at the wrong.
Yeah, I don't have a number.
Oh, God, well, why does mine?
I don't have a REZO.
So the REZO I have has a condition 11 that says all exterior fissure fix. So I'm looking at resolution 2021. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong REZO. Okay, never mind.
Linda, I don't see a REZO on my staff report, but I do see that detail on the plans.
Yes, so I forwarded earlier today the resolution, because somehow it got posted on the website, but it wasn't included in the copies that were made.
That's right.
I don't know how that happens, because the copies are supposed to be made from the copy that's scanned to the.
Things happen, Linda.
But now I'm looking at.
So the, the version that I printed off the website, when I realized, thanks to Commissioner Swift's sharp eye, that I didn't have a copy of the REZO, it ends at page four, paragraph 10 continues over from page three. And that's the last paragraph in this one that I have.
Okay, and you printed that off the web?
I did, and so I didn't look at the one that.
Okay, then I'm really confused. Hang on. I don't know how that happens, because. Well, anyway, so are you saying, so are you saying that none of you have seen a resolution for this? That's what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that I, sorry about the dogs. I printed out the resolution from the one that was posted to the public. When, when I went to pick up my paper packet and realized that we didn't have the REZO in the paper version. I'm going to kill these dogs. I, I printed out one that just ends at paragraph 10.
Okay, yes, because I, yeah, I was, I was just looking at the wrong REZO. I was looking at the signed REZO. So yes, Cindy, Cindy's correct. It does need to be added.
All right, so we have Commissioner Green, I see your hand up. But we do have pending motion and a second and a friendly amendment. And before I go back to Commissioner Fragoso and ask her how she feels about the friendly amendment, I'm going to ask Commissioner Green if he has something to add.
No, I just want to, I opened up the one that's in Linda's email, and it also ends at paragraph 10. That's all.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Fragoso, I think to you, the question is, will you accept the friendly amendment to the date stamp on the architect's plans that's reflected on page two of the resolution? And the addition of a new paragraph.
Number 11.
I would recommend number 11, Commissioner Swift, rather than number two, just to save on renumbering. But number 11, to add the dark sky compliant language that Commissioner Swift read out to us. Is that acceptable to you?
I find that acceptable.
And Commissioner Gonzalez Parver, your second is still, still out there, right?
Yes, it, it, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion as amended with a second. And Linda, if you could take the roll call.
Okay, Fragoso?
I.
Gonzalez Parver?
I.
Green?
I.
Jansen?
I.
Swift?
I.
Chair Newton?
I.
So that is a unanimous decision. There is a 10 day appeal period and a $625 fee if you want to appeal the commission's decision. We are at 8:20. You're doing so well. Commissioner Swift, use your hand up.
It is up. And I was going to ask the chair if we could have a quick five minute break.
Thank you. I will second that motion.
Okay.
I hadn't made a motion yet.
But yes, let's do that and return at 8:25. Thanks, everybody.
So I must apologize. Usually I do have a break slide here, but I do not have it right now.
Hopefully all are sort of coming back. We are going to be moving on to the next item on the agenda. Oh, this is exciting. Okay. Anything waiting for? Commissioners, when you are back, please turn your cameras on, so I know you're there. And soon as I've got four of us present, I'll ask our planning director to begin. There we go. We're at quorum, Commissioners Gonzalez Parver and Commissioner Green. We will wait no further. Ben, you can start anytime.
Yes, and I would also ask that EMC Planning Group and Michelle Stevens be promoted to panelist at this time. So that when their turn to speak comes up. Okay, public engagement strategy. Your commission is aware that the housing element, in particular this housing element, is one of the, if not the highest importance, planning effort that can be done by this town. And we have our general plan updates. It's pretty well acknowledged that the housing element portion of the general plan is the most important element in the general plan. And not just because of the state mandates that pertain to housing and housing elements, but also because of the dramatic impact that housing can have on the community and because of the impact that the state's ongoing plethora of statutes and mandates have had on how communities jurisdictions look at the development of housing, the provision of housing. And I would simply say that this topic has been extensively discussed by the town in various presentations. And as we get in more into the mechanics of our public engagement strategy, you will see how that information is being linked. Suffice to say, it behooves the town to assert what control it continues to have with respect to its preferences. In terms of this housing element update, the state mandates that we update the housing element and with it, in this case, to other general plan elements, the safety element and the land use element every eight years. And the state has further said that this regional housing needs allocation work has to be completed by December of 2022. It's a town. It has to be ready to go to the state for adoption in January of '23. Going back to the, in a sense of this, it's widely acknowledged that statewide, we're not getting the job done in terms of providing housing for the public. In particular, housing for workforce and lower income individuals. I always feel like market rate is market rate, those who can pay it can. But we understand that there's an immense gap that's now been created between the cost and affordability of market rate housing and what's affordable to the vast majority of the people. And in particular, what's affordable to people who are in the lower income brackets in our society. In doing this housing element update, staff has felt from the very beginning of the conception of this project that it's critical that the town engage with a full spectrum of the various communities that make up the overall Fairfax community. Our purpose in designing this engagement strategy is to create an inclusive, transparent, and proactive approaches to achieving this broad participation. Given the really critical and high priority and profile of this effort, we did things like plan in approximately five times the number of public meetings that occurred in the last housing element. And as you will see tonight, a very substantive and in many ways innovative engagement program. So with that, I will turn this over to Andy Flower from EMC Planning Group, the consultants who are taking the lead on this housing element process. And with Andy is Michelle Stevens, who is the expert on how this online platform is being created and developed. So take it away, Andy and Michelle.
Thank you, Ben, and thank you, Chair and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I have a PowerPoint, and I'm going to defer to Michelle first to walk us through our Fairfax Speaks website.
Thank you, Andy, Commission. I will start by sharing my screen and give us a fairly high level overview in about the five minute range of time. Let me share my screen. I'm going to fairfaxspeaks.com, which is your engagement HQ website. So this is the central platform for all of your engagement activities as part of your digital-first engagement approach. You'll still have those ongoing activities, maybe some face-to-face opportunities. But for now, we've got our platform, fairfaxspeaks.com. We've got, as I scroll down the page, or at the top right, you have that opportunity to sign in or register in order to participate with the page and the activities or with the site and activities. We'd like you to sign up. Well, we're using this information to better understand who we're hearing from and to make sure that we're reaching out to the broadest amount of Fairfaxians as possible. So at the very least, we need your username, which will be associated publicly with your comments. It does not need to be your, your proper name, but at least something that can be associated with your comments and referenced in the reporting activities. An email and password. The email will be, of course, be kept private and only visible to the town and the site administrators. And then a password, which is only visible to you, as always, don't share your password with others. Couple of questions, just to help us understand where the comments are coming from and in order to help us reach that broader audience. It is a two-step registration process. So once you hit that register button, you'll get an opportunity to confirm via your email address that you enter, that you are in fact a human, and that is your email. And that way you can continue to engage on the site. So throughout our housing element update process, we'll be updating this page with new activities, new information, and ways to engage. This is your central stop to both become informed about the project as well as the opportunity to engage and have that ongoing two-way conversation with the team. Got four different, what we call pages available when we first start. And we'll take a closer look at each one of these, the Welcome to Fairfax Speaks, the Update Survey. And then, as I scroll down the page, we have a high level overview to let us know where we are in this process. It may seem like a long process, but as we get into it and we work with the community, we'll find that this may not feel like quite enough time, but we'll make sure that our participation activities are really meant to drive the outcomes of this project. And at the bottom, we've got public meetings and a resource library. Just going to open each one of these and give you just a high level look into what the activities are. So on our Welcome to Fairfax Speaks page, that button takes us to just a description of what this site is about. What is Fairfax Speaks? What is the expectation for the community and our participants? We also have that opportunity to sign up, those FAQs, so frequently asked questions. But if one of the questions you have is not being answered in that FAQ, you're encouraged to just type your question here. And if that question is applicable to a broader section of the community, we'll post it publicly, but we'll also reply directly to you. In addition to the Welcome to Fairfax Speaks, we have our Housing Element Update page. And this is that basic information about what is this project? What are we doing? How long will it take? And starts to describe our initial engagement activities. So we're starting with that mapping activity and a photo contest. But as we move through this process, we'll have additional milestone tasks. And we'll be changing the activities to make sure we're getting input through the entire process and also closing the loop. So when we take a survey or we ask you to take a survey, we'll be coming back with what we heard and what we're doing with that information, making sure we're closing that loop with you. Ever have questions or feel like we are not closing that loop? Please reach out to Ben, the project team, or, like I said, use this platform to submit your questions directly online. We have a quick poll here, really just acknowledging that this can be scary, that this may be uncomfortable, that the ask or the directive we've been given has some, has some real risks to it, and we want to acknowledge those throughout this process. There's a survey activity. This is a quick five-question survey. You can see that I'm being required to sign in or register in order to have access to this. Again, that's because we really want to be able to understand who we're hearing from and to invite more and more of our residents into the conversation and being able to identify anyone who might be missing from that conversation. On all of the pages, hopefully you've seen these opportunities to use social media as a megaphone. So we're not having the conversation on social media. We're using social media as an invitation. Say, come, come in here and come to the source of information. Have your conversation in a way that we can understand and really listen to what you're saying and what those concerns or ideas are. We have a mapping activity. And what you, I'm hoping that you're seeing across each of these pages is a very consistent layout. And that's intended to help our users, our participants, learn how to engage with the site. So across the top, we'll have that opportunity to, for the social media, a description about what the activity or information on the page is. On the right-hand side, you'll have an opportunity to sign up, see where we are in our life cycle, or even stay informed. This is a way that you can subscribe without necessarily registering. Or even if you have registered, when you subscribe, you'll be enrolled in those updates or newsletters we'll be sending out. The mapping activity, so once you're registered, you'll be able to click on this map and be able to drop a pin on places that are special to you. So a little description about that activity, don't worry, you don't have to remember it all tonight. We'll have every page, every tool includes instructions. And if you get lost, just reach out to one of the team members. Got that, again, I'm not signed in, so it's saying, hey, Michelle, you need to sign in if you want to drop a pin. And once I do drop a pin or pins show up as a participant, I would have the ability to answer a couple of questions and even upload an image of my favorite place. And of course, other participants can see those images and those pins, and you can all endorse or add as many as you'd like, although we're hoping maybe we limit those to 20 to ensure that everyone has a role in the conversation. Final activity that we're starting with is the photo contest. And this is exactly what it sounds, a photo contest. So we're using our brainstorming board, just this here. And all you do is click this View All Ideas or Sign in to Register, Submit Your Ideas. And when we come back, you know, for our next meeting, as we get through this first phase, we'll be able to report on these and really have some, some great ideas and great photos to share and use those throughout the project. So we're having that homegrown activities to really drive our thinking here. And we have two resource pages. The first is this Public Meetings page, and this will be an ongoing update of our public meetings, including links to staff reports, meeting recordings, as well as helping you to find additional key. as well as helping you to find um, additional key dates or uh, other steps within the process. And finally, right now, we're launching with our resource library. Again, a great source to start to dive deeper on what is this project? What documents are we considering? Another place to ask those questions, as well as a place for you to submit ideas or documents. So again, if you're registered, you can complete a, what we call a survey, but a short form, where you have that ability to provide additional information for the project team to consider. So back to the homepage, just one more high level. At the top, we've got a quick navigation bar that will take us to that opportunity to learn more about the project, see those upcoming or past meetings, reference library, sign in or register. As we scroll down, everything that kind of highlights as you hover over it is a live link that takes you to an engagement page or an engagement activity where you can learn more about the project and participate. And we'll be updating this throughout the process. Back to you, Andy.
Michelle, that was wonderful. Really appreciate your participation in this tonight. Um, I know it's late for you, you're at mountain time. So if, if, um, if you need to sign off, we certainly understand. But if you, if you want to hang around for questions, we welcome that too.
I'll stay for a couple of minutes. And so if there's technical questions about the platform or the tools, that's for me. If it's content process, that's Andy and team.
Through, through the chair, if, if I may.
Go ahead.
Am I on? Okay. Uh, Michelle, I had a question for you. Uh, regarding uh, photo, the, the photographs. I didn't, I didn't get that far. I, I did register, everything went smoothly. I submitted a few questions, I got a quick response, not necessarily an answer, but the uh, confirmation that my question was received, so that, that works very well. One of the things I couldn't figure out, there's a list where you specify, what are my fears about this process? And I checked three of them, but I was only allowed to check one. Is that, is that we can only have one fear?
That's a really good point, Norma, and I think.
Or is that a glitch?
So um, that tool that we're using is called the polling tool, and the poll is only a single answer uh, tool. If we wanted to allow multiple priorities, so people to have more than one fear, which is probably a, a real statement there, uh, we can use the survey tool and have a single question survey that would allow multiple answers. So Andy and Ben and I will take that back and see if that's a, a change we should make there as well.
And I did notice that I, I tried clicking several of them several times, it didn't work. But then uh, I see you can, you can ask a question if you know to go back up. And so it, it took me a minute to find it, oh, I can ask a question. And then I said, okay, my additional fear is blah, 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 just to get that in and see how that worked.
That's great. And actually, Norma, that's a, a really good feedback because we could also add what's called our guestbook tool, which is an, is kind of um, a, is a place for people to leave their thoughts and sign their name without interaction between participants. So we could add that, it's kind of like a wall, like a kind of almost a, a wall where people can see their thoughts. So that's some really great feedback, we'll take that back with us.
Nice. Otherwise, it worked, it worked quite well.
Thank you, Commissioner Fregoso and Commissioner Jensen and then Commissioner Green.
Um, yeah, so this, it's a standalone site. Um, my question is, why is it not embedded within the town of Fairfax site? What's, what's the thinking there?
When you ask for it to be embedded, or tell me a bit more about what you, what, how that experience, what your um, what you would like that user experience to feel like.
Well, no, it's a question, the, right? You would, you would expect that, um, you know, people that are interested to find out or learn something about the town of Fairfax will go to the town of Fairfax website. You know, and you'll find the agendas, the calendar, you will find background information. And so they're used using that interface. Um, yeah, this website has additional features and understandable for what's going on. Why is that not embedded a part of the town of Fairfax website? But why is it a separate website with a slightly separate interface? It's a question, why? I presume you guys thought about that.
Yeah, that, yeah. I could jump in really quickly. The reason we don't have any links right now is we're treating your commission as sort of beta testers for this site. And so, and I, I can say that at the subcommittee meeting, there were some pertinent comments that we turned around uh, and made some changes. So what we want to hear is this very intelligent group giving us their preliminary comments and then immediately on the heels of any changes we make to reflect those, um, we will turn around and provide links on the town website uh, so that people know how to get to this independent platform. And then, Michelle, you could talk about why it exists in a separate context than the town's website.
Sure. So as an apologies commissioner, when I hear embed, I'm thinking kind of a, a frame within the town's website. Hyperlinks, of course, will be available as soon as the town feels comfortable that it's uh, the grand opening as compared to the soft launch of the site, making it a really uh, an easier transition, your point that residents will come to the town's website and then be guided to the engagement site. As a company, we intentionally keep Engagement HQ separate from the, from our organization's websites. And we primarily serve local government. And that's because local government websites tend to not be easy to navigate. And they tend to be full of a lot of information and government speak, whereas an Engagement HQ site is really intended to be a place where people come to gather and natural language and isn't so much of a feeling of big brother is watching you, but much more of a, let's solve these problems as a team.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Commissioner Green.
Okay, um, well, um, there are a number of red flags. Um, one is that we're asking people to submit photographs and the privacy policy of Fairfax Speaks doesn't say what's going on with those photographs. A number of aspects of that ask of the, it, it, it probably, the website does not comply with current California privacy law. And as linked with our public entity, we must comply with California privacy law. So um, that's, that's kind of a point I want to make. But a question for you is, how is participa-? Well, I guess participation is zero right now, right? Because the, the indicator of uh, one of the things, uh, what am I worried about indicates a hundred percent of people are worried about fire danger. Uh, but that's not a real survey result, right? That's a mock-up result for now. Okay, I think frankly, the user interface and all that is, is pretty good because it's graphical. Um, you know, even though it's not part of the Fairfax website, you have the Fairfax Speaks, the logo at the top makes it look a little bit like the Fairfax website. Um, so I think once it's linked, that'd be great. And then any glitches, you know, that anybody has, I have not had a chance to explore this uh, enough, but um, it's, it, this type of user interface is really good. Um, so hopefully it'll become more available. Um, and um, I think, I think it's a really um, pretty good overall information source. If we get participation, that's the thing, is how are we going to get participation as much as possible here? Because this thing deserves data input and it can probably help analyze what people are thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Your concerns about the California privacy um, rules, we'll happy to take offline and have a deeper um, conversation about those with Ben and perhaps the town attorney. We are, bang the table, our Engagement HQ is, um, we believe compliant and, but happy to explore that further. And there are other California communities that are, that use this site. And thank you so much for the feedback that this can be, that you see how this will be linked together and spot on with, if we don't invite people to come and join us, if we don't get the word out, then the site will just be a, a, you know, kind of a book that sits on a shelf. So it's in everyone's interest to, to help get the word out. We'll, we'll work closely with the town to help market the site. Social media will one piece, newsletters, both physical, I believe, as well as online. And I'm sure Andy will go into those as well.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Ben.
I was just going to respond briefly about privacy laws. We, we have discussed that and we understand that in terms of posting of pictures, we're going to have to clarify with people um, that they have provided their, their uh, permission to do so and that if it's photos of other individuals, there's other aspects. So we're, we're exploring that and fill our, our, of course, our, our mandate is to comply with any relevant laws in that regard.
Okay, uh, I see Commissioner Swift's hands up and then I'll go to Commissioner Fregoso.
Um, I agree with Commissioner Fregoso's comment on when she tested the fears. When I tested that, I didn't try multiple um, selections for that. And I think people are going to have more than one fear. So I think that would be better done as a survey so that you can collect all of that information. Because otherwise, if you can only do one fear, people aren't going to go and do comments to address what their other fears are. I think it's easier done with a survey tool.
Is, um, is there any concern that? I guess the question is, is there, should there be a, a, a top three fears? Or is it uh, okay for them? When we think about data and we're really trying to narrow down and, and help pinpoint to guide the project. And so that list right now in this, in the poll question is a list of fears. Um, and answering one was kind of helping to get that priority. So any feedback you have on helping to prioritize and set those, those bumpers are, are really appreciated.
Okay, Commissioner Fregoso and then Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mimi. Uh, yeah, in terms of the fears, I will take another look at it. Uh, but right, it wasn't clear, it didn't say you only get one. Maybe if we can select three or so, that would, that would be good. And just clarify, maybe right below, instead of having to go back to the top and click a question to make a comment or ask a question, having it just below where you select your dots, but definitely uh, the broader uh, the fears, I mean, the more fears we get to from people, the better off we will be. And speaking of fear, I think it's much better that this not be an integral part of the town's website. Because I think people would not trust it. And I find having that uh, degree of separation uh, is to everyone's advantage and that the community hopefully will be more willing to come and express their concerns. And also, uh, we don't have the resources to manage this along with uh, uh, all our commission packets and everything that's going on. So uh, I think it's, it's great to have it be a hyperlink. It, it looks and feels more and more like Fairfax. And so I, I think that's fine.
Thank you, Commissioner Green and then Commissioner Jansen.
Well, okay, so the, the biggest fears thing, I, I think would be good renamed. I don't like the word fears, maybe concerns. Um, it's just a little sharp, uh, you know, and most people's biggest fear really is getting sick and dying. And it's, you know, it's not listed either, but one of these, it's just not a great word. Um, that's just my thought. Um, and, and if you put these in some kind of order, then you're influencing what is kind of supposed to be a general survey. I mean, I've conducted surveys for forty years in the trademark realm and you don't want to, you cannot appear to be influencing anybody's choices. So um, you want it as, as, as uh, generic as you can possibly have it when you have this kind of questioning. Um, so I think it's, it's not bad because, you know, one of the biggest concerns is fire hazard and that's at the bottom. It's too bad they can't be sort of across, but anyway, you order them, they're going to be in some kind of order. Um, just, so just those thoughts, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Jansen.
Um, so if this has been online for quite a while and successful, there is a ton of data that comes out of that, which is interesting both for the public and for the town. So is there a reporting format other than just looking at the site? Is there a reporting format planned to um, bring that forward?
Sure, so within the backend of Engagement HQ, we'll be able to run reports on all of the engagement activities. So we'll be able to see um, unique visitors as well as their number of visits. So we expect individual visitors to come back multiple times throughout the process. Uh, we'll be able to run detailed reports on surveys. We use AI sentiment analysis. So when we are asking, maybe in the brainstorming tool or within the places tool or discussion forums as we move through this process, we'll be able to use sentiment analysis to, to bring all of those points in and have kind of a quick snapshot view as well as have that long form narrative view. So all of that reporting will be available. We'll be able to cross-reference that with that participant information that we're asking for as part of signup. So we'll be able to get pretty dialed in and answer the specific questions as we move through the process. Um, the polling tool is, is really intended, like I said, to give that quick poll. It's not supposed to be a, a statistical survey. It was really a way to get us moving forward. And that's one more of those ways where it has instant reporting. So there's both the instant reporting where it's giving you that immediate feedback as well as what we'll be doing when we close an activity, take it back, digest it as a team and then present what we've heard and how we're using that information for the next step.
Okay, yeah, and we've not seen a, a placeholder of that format, right? It's something that will come in the future, okay?
Thank you. Uh, anyone else want to add anything or provide any other feedback?
Oh, I just had one question through the chair. How long is this test version out for us to keep playing with it before it's finalized?
That is a tremendous question. It is not a test environment. So you are in a soft launch phase, but all of your activities are on a live site. So, and earlier there's a comment about the poll was just a mock-up. That actually has had one participant vote. And so the, um, the danger there, one hundred percent is actually a live feedback. So as you play with the site, um, I can encourage you to leave real comments, ask real questions. You are the subject matter experts within your town and as planning commissioners. The questions you have are the same questions your neighbors are going to have. So if you can start to seed the site by having real participation with your concerns and your ideas, it will really help to boo bolster others who come to the site and are like, well, I'm not going to be the person who asks the first question. Or I don't know if I want to, if there's only one poll result, maybe I don't want to be the second person. So the more people who come and, and participate, the more, and the more others will come and participate. So if you're not in the test phase, you are live. I don't know when we'll, when, when the town will be promoting it, but it is a live site.
Okay, okay. And then my, my other comment is that the, the surveys and polling and information is still somewhat limited, right? And as we move forward with the housing element, there could be additional material or additional polls or sections opened up for discussion and questions, right? Because it's kind of at an early phase, okay?
Yep, and this whole, and Andy will dive into this, as he dives into the schedule. And we'll see uh, how throughout the process, how our original kind of five-question survey leads to the next five-question survey. Instead of asking our participants to sit down and brain dump for twenty minutes, they can come and take three minutes and then we'll go away for two or three.
That's, that's, that's a good way to do it. And just one other, uh, one other thing. I didn't get to drop a pin. I, I will do that next, but I noticed that the map only has a couple of locations named. If you drop a pin, will it tell you what location it is? So if I drop a pin, because it's just a block, there's no street in some instances. If I drop a pin, but you know, most people can't read a map or they're not really spatially oriented. They could be dropping a pin on the wrong spot. So when I put a pin there, is it going to say, oh, you're at the roastery? Or if I put a pin at the bike museum, will it say bike museum? Or you have to really specifically identify and locate that spot? So that might be tricky.
The, there is the capability in the platform to display the pin's address when it is dropped. The, the kind of pushback we usually receive from our, from our municipal clients is that nobody The, the kind of pushback we usually receive from our, from our municipal clients is that nobody wants their address shown when they drop it on somebody's house. Um, and so we tend to be like, you know, the pin without the location information, the address, the, you know, the coordinates are happening in the backend, we'll be able to pull that information. There's also an opportunity to leave comments. So the participants could say, you know, corner coffee shop or whatever that specific location is. So when you do get the first chance to drop a pin, if you feel like we should add additional questions or turn on the addressing, please reach out to, to Ben.
Or maybe I didn't, I'll have to go back and see. So if you're there and you drop a pin, something pops up that says, tell us about this spot.
Yes. And if you'd like, I can show you that. Um, and if that would be helpful, I see Ben.
I can, I can go and play with, I can go and play with that. Thank you. But I just was wondering how, how that will work.
Yeah, if I might interject, Michelle, one of the things that, uh, this, this is has the use of is zooming in. And so at the scale, we, we were discussing how, how far zoomed out did we want to have to start? And the idea was to have it broad enough where you can identify Fairfax relative to Manor. Um, and then because most people are pretty comfortable zooming in, it's got that function identified. As you get further in, you start to get into, uh, the street details, the addresses, the buildings, et cetera, sort of, even though it's not a Google platform, um, or it, it's, it's similar enough that that's the type of, that's the level of detail that it provides.
Believe there is a function to search for a particular address. So if.
Well, there is a search function also. And so I could plug in my favorite cafe.
Yeah. Michelle is preparing a, a quick video and Michelle, you know, these are the type of questions that I think will be helpful as you provide that overview. So we're going to embed her video into this site. We've just sorted out the technical aspects of that today. And so you will see that appearing very shortly as a box, uh, which is sort of a guided tour to the site by Michelle. Um, and I think that will be very helpful in introducing people to the various functions. And if they have questions, and like I said, and your commission has already picked up on, there's lots of places where you can ask questions. So the idea is to demystify the process and the use of that site that, and to enhance its interactivity. So that everybody feels comfortable using.
Thank you, Ben. Um, Commissioner Green.
Well, you know, I'm, I've always been for as much public input as possible. So what I would recommend we do is see if we can get the new town manager to approve a banner across the street that says Fairfax Speaks, Be Heard, or something like that. I think we need to really push people, you know, um, as I, as I said in the, in our meeting with the commit, with the, uh, committee, there are rumors going around town that the state wants us to build 5,000, you build 5,000 units by the end of 2022 here in Fairfax. 5,000, this is the kind of rumors that get started. So we really need to get people. And I would recommend, I'll paint it myself if you want, a banner that goes across the street that says something like Fairfax, be heard, you know, something like that. Real easy, quick, you know, get people out there. And then make the link really big on the front of our website, you know, make a big thing. And then the last thing is, uh, we should have a disclaimer when people go to that website that says you're leaving the Fairfax Town website and you know, they're liable for everything you do, not us. So talk to the town attorney. I'll be offline with you, Ben, about that aspect.
Yeah, thank you, Phil. And that's a great, you actually, your comment about the banner provides a great segue because while this is a very innovative and powerful tool, and we think it will connect with a lot of people who don't show up at town council meetings or by the time a, our planning commission meetings, by the time a topic is discussed, they're, they're, they're too exhausted or they're just, you know, they're renters. And we know that when housing topics are discussed, you usually hear from homeowners and not renters. So one of the abilities of this is through the self-identification process and the questions asked, we will be able to garner different groups of individuals and, and actually create that ability on the site. But I also want to say that your comment about banners, Andy's going to take up the rest of our engagement strategy. So we've got this wonderful online platform that we think is going to be very, uh, helpful in, in participation and engagement, but we also have a whole bunch of other stuff. So I think we've, we've got, we've covered off on the, uh, the platform, the online platform phase. And now we can go to the rest of the engagement strategy. Thanks, Michelle. Andy, you're muted.
Chair, without further ado, shall I start my presentation? So I'm sure this image looks familiar. Here we are in Fairfax and gazing down. So I, I took this photo from a, a drone YouTube. And I just liked the way that it, it looks back at the city, looks back at the town, excuse me, and it, and it, um, shows off your hills in a lovely way. So Fairfax Speaks, as Ben was just saying, it's, it's a platform where tools are used to exercise the community engagement plan. So today in your, uh, agenda packet, you should have received our draft community engagement plan. And we certainly welcome any comments you might have around that. And it's, it's the way in which we intend to use this platform. And, um, and the tools that we've been talking about today, those are ways, uh, that we hope to engage the community and make it fun and, um, have them keep coming back. We'll, we'll be launching new activities, uh, during, during the heat of this whole process, even once a week is our, is our goal. There will be some lulls in the process where there might be, um, a, a chance for folks to review and catch up and things like that. Uh, so, um, yeah, I'm excited about how this is all going to unfold. And I want to introduce you to this concept of, uh, engagement phases or stages, uh, that these are, these are the levels of engagement that we'll be using throughout the site. And so tonight, just as a test model for it, I've, I'm including these little icons throughout the, uh, presentation. So just to go through them a little bit, the goal for informing is to provide balanced and objective information in a timely manner. And we have a slightly different definition for that on the website that really gets at the idea that, um, we're informing the public, but this is also opportunities for the public to inform us because there's no one better knowledgeable about the community of Fairfax than, than the people who live here. And so, um, we, we we really want this update to the general plan to be informed by, by the people. And so with that though, we, we keep a promise that we're going to keep people informed and we're hoping that the community will keep us informed as well as we go along. Uh, so the next level is consultation. And so with that, we're wanting to obtain feedback. So that's when questions start to arise and, and our promise to the public is we'll listen and acknowledge your concerns and also your brilliant ideas, things like that. And, uh, when we get to workshops and open houses and, and in some places of the website, we're going to get to the place of involving where we really get to, um, really get our, our hands on some decision-making ideas. And that's where the brainstorming really happens. And of course, that point of involvement can't really happen without, uh, these other steps leading us that way. So here's our agenda and you can see our little icon there for info. So, uh, we're just gonna, I'm gonna keep it kind of quick. I think I saw you on and I know it's late, so I'll, I'll try to keep you engaged here. So we're just gonna talk about the eight uh, strategy elements that are part of the community engagement plan, our current status for where we are now and, and some time for questions and answers. So we're really wanting to generate community-wide interaction. The only way we can do that is if we build and sustain trusted relationships, uh, between the community and us as consultants and of course with the town staff with Ben and his team. So, uh, with that, we, we want to make sure that we, we keep our communication as effective as possible. And we're going to be leaning on you guys to help us, correct us when, when we're not getting it quite right, or, or when something could be worded better, or if something's a little misleading. Uh, absolute respect, mutual respect among all participants. And, uh, process transparency, we're going to keep people informed of where we're at, where we're going and where we've been. If somebody comes in late to the process, there's plenty of information they can catch up and, and jump right in. And information sharing, and that's a two-way street. We're going to be sharing information with the public and as Michelle showed us and, uh, I'm happy to show that, bring us back to that place, but there is an opportunity for the community to, um, share not only their ideas and their questions, but even files. This is part of our proposal when we started, when Ben first read our, our response to the proposal, to the request for proposal to, to work with the town of Fairfax. And so it's, it's just a quick outline of, of what our commitment is and we wanted to be transparent about that. So here we are, it's 60 days in and, uh, at least the 15th was, and that's when we submitted our, our draft community engagement plan. And, uh, and so this presentation tonight is just a, a quick overview of all the points that we make within that draft plan. So here we go. We're going to go, uh, one through eight. I'll try to go quickly, but please, please interrupt me if there's any questions along the way. So we're going to start with our purpose. Our purpose, as, as Ben mentioned earlier, is to create an inclusive, transparent, proactive approach for broad participation in the process of updating the housing and safety elements. Of course, if, if we come to also needing to, uh, update the land use settlement, we'll do that as well. So what does successful public engagement look like? How will we know if outreach is successful? It's very important that as we, as we launch each of our tools, and, and this is just a quick snapshot of, of what we have as a working document, a live document. It's a layout and, and, uh, of all of the weeks leading up to our deadline with HCD. And with each week, in a draft form, we've got some ideas about what we want to roll out into, into the, um, platform, which tools we're going to use, what the activity might be. And it's really important for us to also consider what is the objective with each one of them. So that it's not busy work and it's not meaningless and it's not, you know, it's not to, it's not only to keep people coming back, but it's, it's something where we can learn from the registrants. Other opportunities could be like the quick poll where people don't need to register, but we could just kind of get it. Get some, a, a quick, um, snapshot of where people are at or, or what's more important to them. And you can see here, we've, we're including the level of engagement as we go along. And that's what we have here. And, and so this draft tool, one of the things we're going to be able to do is to have a page, a private page that's just for the planning commissioners to be able to see these, these, these kinds of tools that are in, uh, draft. So that if you want to check in and see what's coming up next week, and maybe you have some ideas about how it should be different, or you have an idea about uh, you know, a burning desire for like, I know what question I want to have answered before I understand, you know, where I want to go with the site options report. Then you can always email that to us. The site won't be interactive among the commissioners. Because we don't want, we want to make sure that we respect the Brown Act, but there will be a location where with your tagged sign-in, you have a page that you can go to to not only see all of the information that everybody else is seeing, but also see these kinds of things that are the tools. So again, here's the engagement process and we include, we include, um, a recognition we're at with each page. Here's our, here's our, um, our tasks, our task schedule, our milestone tasks. And right now we're working through the analysis. We've got a safety element in draft form right now. Our eye is on site options because this is a crucial, crucial part of the whole process and it's probably going to be the most controversial. And we've got it early on in the process. So we're, we're launching tools now because we want people to get familiar with how the, the website works and how some of our tools, people can engage with them. So that as we get into this really, you know, hot topic, highly debated, most likely part of the process, we want folks to have the, the tools not, not have any questions. Uh, that they'll know how to use the tools. And instead, we're focused on the engaged discussion. So, uh, and certainly where the planning commission can always step in and share with us is maybe you have a question that you know that you would love to have answered or, or an idea, a way that the community could be involved. Especially once you start using the tools, it will help familiarize you with the language or the, um, the abilities that, that this platform makes possible. So we will certainly welcome your ideas throughout the entire process. And we'll also be reporting back the data as we go. So that's something that we have included with our, with our Excel spreadsheet for, for the tools and how we roll them out over time, there's always a looping back and, and and this is what we're going for, this idea of conversation loops rather than a linear process. We're not just as a consultant group, we don't want to just provide notice, receive comments, provide report. We really want a, a truly engaged process where we have reflection and feedback and, um, and that that then builds on itself from, from there. There we go. Uh, so you can see here now also the, the way that the, um, there's a bit of a bell curve in, in the, um, in the engagement, uh, facility so that we, we get to the point of involvement. Particularly when we get to alternatives and, uh, apologize for the word development there. It's, it's not intended to be like construction development, but rather the, the development of alternatives. So it's this idea that as, as we get to parts of the process that is, is less about informing and becomes more about possibly selecting alternatives for how to move forward to, to meet the requirements of the HCD, uh, update. That's when we want people to, to just really easily step into the platform, engage with us and, and feel involved. So we're making sure that we reach out early and often, and that we have some stakeholders that, uh, that we build trusted relationships with. And, um, and so we'll, and, and so that they can also help inform us about ways to reach out to the broader community. We'll be meeting with the RESJ, uh, racial equity and social justice committee, hopefully on July 1st. We're, I think we're still waiting for confirmation on that. Uh, we, we had hoped to meet with them prior to our, our draft. Roll out on, on the 15th for the community engagement plan. But, and, and so this is one point that we, we want to ask that the planning commission consider keeping, keeping this plan in draft form until we hear some feedback from the RESJ. We, we want to be sure to include, um, interaction at the food pantry and, um, also at farmers markets and that we reach out to the Center for Volunteer and Nonprofit Leadership. And we'd love to hear from you, uh, who, who you think we need to hear from, who's being missed. And as we report back, as we go through the process, that might become more evident. But, uh, if, if you know of a group. And I'm, I'm a little distracted. I see Commissioner's hand, Commissioner Swift's hand raised. Would you like to comment? Or ask a question?
I just wanted to get it up, um, before the end. I can hold it till the end if, if you prefer, that's fine.
If it's on this topic, um, either way.
I was curi-, okay, I was curious about, um, the purpose in reaching out to CVNL. The Center for Volunteer and Nonprofit Leadership.
Yes, uh, Commissioner Swift, I could respond to that. If, they're more of an in, in information hub. So the idea is to use them, um, as a way to engage with the specific nonprofit groups that are, would be more directly involved with Fairfax. So what we're saying right now is we don't know the full range of people, for example, that are interacting with, uh, low-income individuals, but we will use that, their kind of conduit and hub, uh, position to gain access to those groups.
Commissioner Fergoso.
Andy, thank you. Have you mentioned the Chamber of Commerce in this list of groups that we want to work with? I didn't. I didn't, I didn't hear you mention them. Uh and also uh MEHC, M E H C, they're very involved with affordable housing. And they're doing some really interesting work, educating people about general plans and housing elements. If you guys have not seen uh their workshops and informational sessions on housing elements, uh they're very, very good and they would be a very helpful group to bring into the mix uh as well as the chamber and sustainable Fairfax, of course.
Yes, we have um reached out to the chamber and uh the executive director has has promised uh to cooperate and assist us in in our outreach, for example. Um one of our goals is is to uh interview or survey workers in town and try to see yeah what their specific needs are, so and thank you for those other suggestions, we will follow up.
Like, thank you very much. That's great. Uh yes, so I'm moving forward, wha- what we wanna be sure of also is that we're providing the kind of information that helps guide the participation, so on the website using very plain language and hopefully, you know, easily um easy direction within the the website that um that we're able to supply things like the state requirements and and some housing element knowledge and some of our expert reports and and later on, we'll also add maybe some case studies, examples. Uh we'll make sure that the town zoning and design standards are available on the website, and of course, the project style, project schedule and milestones. But the the experience of folks living or working in the community, that's 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 the foundation of of um of what this uh what our outcomes will be based on. So uh risk assessment and mitigation. One of the things we're really excited about with um banging the table is that they they moderate. Uh so we can be sure that this will be a safe place where um people where um where comments and uh space will be uh ensured that that it will be very civil. Um we wanna be sure to be asking engaging quest, asking engaging questions along the way, and we would appreciate your help with that. Uh and uh certainly attracting a crowd, we we need all the committees and commissions to um to reach out, well, to first, as um Michelle was suggesting, to first sign up and and please populate as much of the site as you can with with your own comments, that will be very helpful. So we'll be setting clear ground rules as we go, not only on the site, but also in our in our um our open houses and workshops, things like that. And some of those may be online and we may get to the point where we're able to have those in person as well. We want to encourage direct posting to the site and um which is why we don't include emails. We we would like for everything to be able to come through the site. And and that may also include interaction um or or review by the commission on reports in ahead of uh planning commission meetings, and we'll talk about that more later. So so some of the engagement tools and techniques uh in the beginning, we may be starting with with a more controlled environment for the for topics that that um that are a little more controversial and we'll keep the open environment for ideas that are focused on things like helping us understand what is wha- what is loved in the community, what are the areas and the and the places that are are just truly what make the town Fairfax. And um and then, of course, we've got some mixed environment as well. Michelle was talking about the guestbook and that's where uh if we were asking people to talk about their concerns, they if they don't find them in the list. They we we could have an area available for people to um just sort of like a wall to um to share their their ideas and their concerns and and that will only help us prepare for for addressing them and making sure that our um energy is is uh focused on the things that matter the most to the to the community. So the way we sustain trust with the communities, we we make sure our in engagement is authentic, that we've got promotional activities regularly planned and that we've got a a communication plan that uh that it gets updated regularly and um and that we encourage feedback and we facilitate discussions and and one point with that is is that uh we may end up having some some private forums later on in the progress or in the process that allow for folks who have similar situations, like say, people who are employed in Fairfax who might like to live here. Then um they can have a place where they can grow their own ideas and then uh over time, we would have each of those private forums come together with with um with some statements that could be shared across so that we can grow empathy among uh among different folks and who have um different reasons for being engaged with this process. So our current status, we are ready to launch uh the street banner, Commissioner Green, um Ben brought that idea to our attention early on and we're very excited about that. And we'd also love to get in uh the Independent Journal, and we wanna make sure to you to use use things that are already available to us like like the sit like the town newsletter and the town Facebook and to to make sure that um we are as integrated as possible um with where people go to for their information. We've also had some interesting ideas like creating some business cards and working with the grocery stores, the local grocery stores and asking them to either in include the business cards with bags or or maybe with flyers and uh and the library. This was an idea that came came up with the subcommittee this last Tuesday. The idea of having a station dedicated at the library just to this website. So that folks who who maybe don't have access to either either the tools or the technology to still have a place where they can share their ideas on our on our site. So as I mentioned before, we're working on the safety element right now, that's in draft form. We're also getting started with with some draft portions of the housing element through our analysis. But all the while, keeping in mind that it's it's the site options that are gonna be it's gonna roll out in early fall, um but that's the report will roll out in early fall, it'll be the summer that we really start to um investigate, analyze, have some mapping exercises that that really start to illustrate some of the alternatives that might be available for um meeting meeting the update requirements. And uh we we look forward to everybody's participation in that. Uh so one last word we'd like to share with you, um as as the public may come to you and and ask you what's going on with this uh housing update, we wanna encourage commissioners to um to to sticks to the outcomes in your conversations with the public, things like housing for teachers, emergency responders. People with disabilities, that that this is something that could uh help um help with fair housing within within the town, it can reduce traffic and congestion. Emphasize public safety and uh keep keep seniors scoo- from getting squeezed out in instead of quantities. A lot of times the discussion can um can stay in a very negative place if it's just focused on the number of units. I think we heard earlier that that there's a rumor going around that it might be five thousand units, in fact, it's four ninety. And um and that's what we have on our website, so folks know that they can come to our website, Fairfax Speaks and and get the the real scoop, and if they have questions beyond that, they can always post them and they'll come right to us. And as Michelle mentioned, we can we can reply directly to them and we can also make it available to the public so the public can see what kinds of questions are being asked. Uh so that concludes my presentation and um I'm available for questions.
Excellent, definitely a cut above next door, Andy.
Thank you very, very much. Uh Commissioner Jansen, you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, question, wow, I'm right up. Um you mentioned uh uh something that I find very interesting. Um it it was somewhere along the line that you would bring together like minded groups, and you gave an example, for instance, somebody who wanna li- work in Fairfax and wanna live there, so that they together again um develop ideas. I I think that's that's very good, that's very positive, instead of having criticism on things, you can get something together. I I'm just curious, how do you think that you're gonna achieve that?
Oh, um, well.
Mechanism.
Yes, well, um as far as the mechanism within the website, that's a possibility that it but it 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 does uh rely on people self-reporting, right? So we would have questions and if if people say yes and yes to this, then it's sort of it gives them the key to then enter into this forum space that is for those individuals who said yes to this and yes, I work in Fairfax, yes, I would like to live in Fairfax, no, I don't live in Fairfax now. Uh you know, if 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 that, for instance, was a forum that we would like to create, uh then they would have the key to walk into that forum. And within that forum, there's the opportunity to to not only share ideas, but then to comment on each other's ideas, which is the most vulnerable, vulnerable part and most, you know, engaged part of the entire platform. So we wanna make sure that people feel safe and um and encouraged to speak their voices when we when we first launched that tool. Now, later on, we might find ways where we have someone who's, you know, uh once they've sort of interacted within that space, they might feel confident to be the representative of of that particular um segment of of the population and and.
You, so if that happens, if people would answer that question like, yes, I work here, yes, I work here. Does that create a pop up like, hey, look here, you might wanna talk to that, or how do you get them into that forum?
Right, well, so they would need to be registered and 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 so um so we have the ability on the backend. It's not that, so all we, all anybody ever sees on the on the face of it is whatever screen name that you've chosen. But in addition to the screen name that you've chosen, you could be Mickey Mouse and uh whenever anybody sees Mickey Mouse, so you know, they'll only know that Mickey Mouse said this here and that there and that over there. But they won't know who Mickey Mouse is. Now, we could may, we could see on the backend, we could see that this is the email to Mickey Mouse, but we still don't know who that is unless there's something indicative within it that is their name. But we're not even looking at that, what we're doing is we're just compiling, we're saying, okay, so this is the this is the group, the subgroup that said yes to this and no to that. We're just gonna send them an email invitation and we're gonna make sure to tag them so that only those people with those emails have a key to come in to this particular forum.
Yeah, but that's the control mechanism, I was asking for the what stimulates them to do that, so let's say. Right, so there's two people that both say like, okay, I love the roastery because I wanna drink coffee there at eight o'clock in the morning. So i- if you fill that out, then there has, something has to happen that alerts them like, hey, if you do that, maybe you wanna talk to ABC. I- is that part of the website? I- it's 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 the motivator.
That we can, yes, well, we can send them an email, but also we would be working, for instance, like with the Chamber of Commerce. So we'll make sure that um, yeah, if if it's a group that we know, we kinda know where they are, you know. If they're employees, then they're at the businesses, right? So we wanna make sure to um to give them personal invitations to, you know, please make sure you try this tool. Okay, we, yeah.
Commissioner Jansen, further to that point, uh an example might be if somebody self identifies themselves as a senior uh who is uh concerned about getting squeezed out. We would follow up uh with that group of, you know, if that group of individuals um to ask them specific questions and to encourage them to participate in this group discussion so that we can hear what they're saying about their concerns. You know, what they're what they're experiencing and in turn, we can ask them questions, okay, here's some options that we've come up with. Uh the that might assist you in dealing with escalating cost of living, uh decreased mobility. Uh you know, their their existing house maybe is less user friendly to them as they get to be less ambulatory. So as we get into those conversations with those specific groups of people, we can begin to uh get information specific to and relevant to that group. And then in turn, go to your commission and to the council and say, this is what we're hearing. Um is that this group is is talking about these needs, this group is talking about these needs. Um and what it lets us do is when we're starting to talk about housing sites and what kind of housing, um we can be much more focused and I think relevant to what the feedback that we've gotten from people. Now, this all presupposes that we will uh get engagement from those groups and part of what we've been doing so far um in meeting with the various town committees and this process is ongoing is letting them know what we're gonna be doing and our next step is to say, hey, here's the website. We need your help in getting the word out and we want you because, let's face it, we have a lot of volunteers in this community and those people are the ones who make things happen and guide that public discussion. So if you're, whether you're a member of the Climate Action Committee, talking about how to reduce the carbon footprint from housing or or ResJ that's dealing with marginalized individuals. Um all these groups have something to say, the individuals who they can either are their participants or who they can reach will have something unique and valuable to contribute. And it's our our goal and our challenge is to meaningfully engage with those people, get information from them and then take it to you, the decision makers, so that as we go through this process, we're li- we're hearing from everybody and you're hearing what we're reporting. And this also gets to the trust aspect too, is if these people who've never really been able to successfully participate in the public discussion are now hearing their voices heard and hearing that input being reflected into the process in the deliberations and into the recommendations and the decisions. To me, it's sort of like a self feeding mechanism where now all of a sudden, it's like, hey, this is working, I'm making a difference. And we all know that one of the most important things in life is to have your point of view and your concerns heard. So we also know that there's a whole bunch of people in Fairfax that are looking at the number of housing units and they're going, how the heck are we gonna make that work in terms of water supply or fire safety? Well, we anticipate that there's gonna be a lot of concerns expressed, I mean, there already have been. And so we're starting that process to reach out to the wildfire prevention authority to look at their evacuation plans and to look at some of that technical information and how that's gonna feed back into those very relevant issues. There's already been conversations with Marin Water um and the the other uh North Marin to talk about their water supply situation. So some of this is is very fluid. Uh I I mean, some of the subcommittee members, you know, have already seen that we've uh adjusted this website based on feedback we got from them two days ago. Um so we're we're pretty excited and enthusiastic and and we see a lot of potential, but we're also relying on your commission to give us ongoing feedback and corrections. And so we want you to be talking about this site and you to be talking up this site. And and also um as we get into the the one on one, the 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 in person workshops and stuff is to be able to 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 loop back to this information that we're getting. Um so that, you know, you may have somebody who's expressing one point of view and it's important that those people realize that, hey, the the people who are in this position to make recommendations or decisions for this town are hearing from a broad group. And we think that that is entirely possible and is in fact designed into what we're doing.
Thank you, uh Director Berto. Um I just wanna remind the commission that I'm gonna go out for a public comment on this whole of the uh of our agenda, so uh I'll go to Commissioner Green and then Commissioner Swift.
Well, okay, so I, as far as getting people, pulling people in, you know, it's just a thought, okay, a reward might be nice. Um a cup of coffee at the Fairfax uh, you know, roastery, which they have some. A cup of coffee at the Fairfax, you know, roastery, which they have some fabulous coffee. If, you know, if the budget can stand it, because, look at, you know, states are offering people Lotto tickets, houses, boats, knots, all kinds of stuff to get vaccinated. And this is, this is for their health. So here we are, talking about this, you know, really esoteric thing called the housing element. And we've got to interest the people of this town. Now, I happen to live on a popular street. Houses get bought and sold a lot around where I live. And I've noticed that there's a younger, you know, demographic wanting to move into Fairfax and coming in. I mean, this house across the street, they sold in one second. One second, uninformed, it was like, would you like, yeah, that's it. And it was overbid. So, so that, yeah, the overbidding, the flipping, and the fact that we have artists coming into hearings, artists, artisans, musicians, and our town has a history of supporting that. Having people like that, you know, creative people who maybe don't have the largest income in the world, live here. We had Irving Berlin perform here. There's a huge history of this. So there's a fight between, you know, the housing problem, cost-wise, and some of the wonderful people who we would really miss if they weren't here. My son's teacher from high school, used to be called Drake, wonderful, wonderful teacher. Unfortunately, she says she had to commute from Vallejo. Maybe it's not a bad place to live, but she'd rather be here. And this is what we need to do. So we need to give people a carrot to sign up. I mean, something, I don't know what. A banner was one idea, but, you know, thinking through all this, and I see Mimi smiling a lot, it's like, there's skepticism that people are going to participate in my mind. And I would like to see that happen. And it's always, I've been on this panel for almost 10 years, I guess. And it's been a frustration how few people participate in really meaningful things. And how those who participate come in based on rumor conjecture and a few people in the town who a lot of people listen to. And they're wrong, perhaps, or they have their own agendas. And that's when we get participation. We had the hugest audience in years for people against 5G. From all over the state, too. They weren't just Fairfaxans. We have, that was one of the largest audiences we had for two hearings in a row. Which isn't a bad cause necessarily, but this is what I'm talking about. So we need to, my suggestion here is offer something to get people to sign up. Sorry, I was so long-winded.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Swift, who will be swift, I know.
Yes, ma'am. We're reaching out and making specific efforts to a lot of groups. We also have neighborhood groups. And one of the suggestions that I would have, we've got several fire-wise neighborhoods in this town. I think we've got nine or so that represent the entirety, almost, of Fairfax. And I think there should be some effort to reach out to those groups as well.
Cool, that was good, is that it?
That was it.
Can I make a quick comment?
Commissioner Fregoso.
And then, and then let's go to public comment, please. I'm willing to contribute a few bucks for certificates or free cups of coffee or, I don't know, something, I could talk about that with Ben at some point.
Thank you. And, you know, great minds think alike. We have already acknowledged that there should be some, some reward for doing that, especially for people, you know, we know that at the lowest income bracket, those people are typically working two or three jobs, they're exhausted. So to assume that they're just going to plop down in their easy chair at the end of the night and, you know, jump into some government website and play along with us. No, it, we want to make sure that we acknowledge that, hey, you're making an extra effort, here's, here's something for you. So we've talked to the chamber about that, and we're working on it.
Thank you. And I'll just say very briefly before I open the public comment, from my perspective, the working couple of jobs of Fairfax are not the lowest income. We've got the people who are unemployed, the people who are without homes. And I recommend we do a little outreach to the local shelters, maybe even our own downtown arcade. And, you know, some of the bars in town, as soon as they're opened up in terms of, you know, getting out, and that'll be fun, there you go. Get out to the bars and get the word out there as well. There's the Center for Domestic Peace in San Rafael. There's the Family Emergency Center in San Rafael. There's the Homeward Bound Marin in Nevada. There's Legal Aid Marin. There's even some county organizations, the county courts and others that do work with people who are without homes. And I, I'm really recommending we look at the barriers to living in Fairfax really hard, and I appreciate that. The, and then, of course, I think somebody mentioned it, but Nextdoor, you know, we got Nextdoor, and reaching out there is probably a good idea, as well as Facebook and Twitter and Instagram and Pinterest and all the other means by which we can communicate. So, that being said, I'd like to see if anyone in the public who would like to get a word in about this item. So we'll open it up for public comment. I don't see anybody. We probably outlasted them all. So raising their hands.
And I would have to agree that if you were saying going once, going twice, raise your hand now, please, that I do not see any hands raised from the public on this issue.
All right, so I am going to close the public hearing on this item. And any final words from staff or Andy or any commissioners before we go to the next agenda item? Okay, Commissioner Green.
So there was no public, it's only 9:45, and there were no public comments, you know, and this is a noticed hearing. So that doesn't do it, right? So you've got to really get out there, that's all, thank you.
I just want to say, I just want to thank your commission for your participation today. Please do continue to give us feedback. I think at this point, we're probably diving into, as Andy mentioned earlier, substantive feedback on topics in the, in the site, you know, within the existing layout of the site. Based on what we were hearing tonight, I think we're ready to take this and start publicizing it heavily over the next few days and weeks. So I think you'll see that, especially as you're participating in other groups and seeing the town newsletter, et cetera. So we will get going on that and do our best to raise the profile, as it were. And I'm sure sooner, soon enough, we will be getting a lot of people attending our meetings.
Well, thank you, Ben. I, you know, I just want us to all be, be ready for a lot of hard work and people coming in at the tail end who won't feel like they were engaged at the beginning, even though we are rolling it out as widely as we possibly can. I just think, you know, having gone through a general plan process that that is part of what happens in our town. And people move in and out of town all the time. And so it's a constantly iterative process, I think. All right, so with that, let's, let's go on to minutes. We have a couple, thank you so much, Andy, I really appreciate the hard work here.
Thanks, Andy.
Minutes from April and May. So does anybody have questions or comments about either April or May's comments? I think the rule is that regardless of who was here, we could probably take them together in one motion if we wanted to. Commissioner Swift.
Okay, I have no comments on the April 15th. I have two corrections on the May 20th. And that would be on May 20th, page two, the third paragraph, replace the word Ms. with Mr. And then also on that same page, the seventh paragraph, reference to a neighbor that was supporting the application, change the name of the neighbor. And I'm going to give you the spelling of the neighbor on that, that provided the support. And that spelling is W-A-N-A-S-E-L-J-A. So that's the neighbor that supported the Madrone Road application. And those were the only two corrections I had for the May 20th.
Commissioner Swift, I'm sitting down while we do this. Could you give me your first edit again? Because I was still trying to find the exact page.
I'm sorry, page two, the third paragraph. Replace Ms. with Mr.
Got it, thank you.
And then you got the second one?
Yes, I did.
All right.
Commissioner Swift, is the Ms. in the fourth and fifth and sixth paragraphs correct? On page two?
Right. No, that's going to be, fourth paragraph has to be, go to Mr. And again, fifth paragraph, Mr. And sixth paragraph, Mr.
Thank you, Chair Newton.
Takes a village, Commissioner Green.
Okay. Yeah, I have one change to the minutes of May, and that is on page, okay, use it. Page two, a third from the bottom, where I'm quoted, "It referred to the resolution suggested the following revisions." And the part that said it should read, "The approval of and consideration" that the window is not the only change. I think I just maybe said "of" there, and I didn't mean "of." So the "of" should come out. "In consideration that the window is not the only change." And that's the only change I have, thank you.
Got it, thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez-Parver.
Yes, so on the minutes for May 20th, page two, four, five, six, the sixth, I guess, paragraph. It says, "Commissioner Gonzalez-Parver asked what they planned to do with the existing entrance if they plan to remove the stairs." It should say, the last sentence, just, it should say them, that the stairs will be removed, but the main front door would remain, instead of just the door.
Thank you, I have it.
I haven't changed as well, but I have to find it. It's on the bottom of page five, and it says, this is the second to last paragraph. Commissioner Gonzalez-Parver provided the following comments. She referred to the size of the sign. And then on the second bullet, she asked if they could add a condition requiring story polls that could be approved by the planning department. Acting Chair Newton stated that was unreasonable. I don't know what he said, but I, can we just strike that? I said it was unreasonable.
I caught that as well, I didn't think you said that.
I find so many other things unreasonable, but not that. Okay, so with those edits, is there a motion to approve both the April 15th and the May 20, 2021 minutes?
I move approval of April 15th and May 20 of 2021 minutes for the planning commission.
Great, thank you, is there a second? Commissioner Green, second. Ben, would you do a roll call of the commissioners for both?
Yes, Commissioner Fregoso.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez-Parver.
Hi.
Commissioner Green.
Hi.
Commissioner Jansen.
Hi.
Commissioner Swift.
Hi.
Chair Newton.
Hi. Thank you all, that's great. And then we will go into the planning director's report.
Yes, thank you, let me get live again. Okay. Reporting on the town council, recognizing that some planning commissioners do not watch every minute of every meeting, especially some of the ones, they just came out with a report, and I think their average minute, their meeting duration is five hours. Just incredible, considering they doubled the number of monthly meetings in the last year. But they did take action at their June 2nd meeting on the two following projects which were heard by the planning commission regarding 63 Spring Lane. They upheld the planning commission's decision. They did add three additional conditions. The first dealt with the transition between private and public roadways. The idea being that it would be, it tends to be paid to grading it so that it would allow emergency vehicle access, et cetera. The second condition they added was dealt with making sure that if there was any storage using the right-of-way, that it not obstruct access to the parcels further up. And the third had to do with the applicant agreeing to provide an easement, allowing emergency vehicle access across the public roadway back to the public right-of-way for emergency vehicles. Another discussion had to do with the actions on the ordinance that the commission reviewed and recommended for adoption of the council pertaining to commercial building colors and exterior changes. And they did pass the first reading of that. However, they did take an action to excise certain language. And what they basically did was every, in the whereas portion and in the findings, every reference that incorporated the word "character," they removed. They did that on the recommendation of a council member who had heard a presentation from the Racial Equity and Social Justice Subcommittee that those might have certain, at a minimum, exclusionary connotations. So they just, acting on that recommendation by a council member, they removed the direct reference. They did take no action to actually change those policies and programs in the general plan. Staff believes that there really isn't a clear explanation why, aside from the enthusiasm by one council member for this change, and that the commission should wait until and unless the council directs changes to resolution language, et cetera, before it worries about that. Staff will continue to monitor council actions on things that go through your commission. And if I see this type of excisement occurring again, I think I will. And if I see this type of excisement occurring again, I think I will request that we do get some specific council direction on where we're going. It's been raised that this might feed into the commission's work on three of the general plan elements that we're undertaking right now. The housing element and the two kind of tag along elements that we have to do as part of that. The safety element and the land use element. So, you know, to be determined, I believe that the council is aware that there are some questions about why they did that. Certainly tagging it into the tail end of a resolution on a commercial building color ordinance seems like a unusual place to make those changes. But so be it. But let's just wait until we hear more about that.
Through the chair, if I can interrupt you, Ben, since we're still talking about the color.
Yes.
What about 19 Broadway that started a total blackout after this was gone through the commission and, and the town council?
Yeah, they were still on our first reading of the ordinance. So this wouldn't impact their ability or to do that color change.
We stopped other proposed improvements from doing so, from going blackout?
Well, what, as your commissioner will require, call in the deliberations is that I think your commission was able to apply appropriate suasion to people going through a design review process where they understood that the total context of the improvements they were proposing would be improved with a more judicious consideration of something besides doom and gloom, gray and black.
How different from 19 Broadway?
19 Broadway was no exterior changes besides building color. So there was no hook to hang it on. Bliss is another example of, you know, some people don't like fairy blue color, but you know, that was within their purview at that time. This, upon, upon second reading on July 7th, and then the 30 day period for it to take effect. So August 6th, nobody would be able to so, change their commercial building color without review by your commission.
As long as you're taking questions in the midst of your report, Cindy, did you have a question?
Um, I did, but he just answered it. I wanted to get the status of that ordinance. So we're still in the timeline. So we're, we're still in the first reading. We still have the second reading. Okay, so you answer that and, and you addressed Norma's question of 19 Broadway, where 19 Broadway wasn't coming to us under design review, so. That's why.
Okay, thank you. Let's finish with the planning director's report and then we can hear any additional questions.
Right, I'm happy to report that the vacancy, recent vacancy on the planning commission in terms of membership was filled by Brett Kelly. He was one of the two very qualified candidates that had applied to fill the then single vacancy on the planning commission for which Commissioner Jensen was selected. And I've got his, his background. He does have a construction background, designing construction. So again, as we get into some of the more technical overall discussions related to ordinances and specifically objective design and development standards, I think that will be very helpful to have somebody with that background. And so I'm enthusiastic about his participation and he will be present for the July 15th meeting. And then further to the odds discussion, I have been in contact with the Opticos to see, to confirm their availability for July 29th. We already have a quorum of commissioners who've stated that they will be available. I haven't heard from all commissioners, but I'm assuming that they will indicate affirmatively. We did have a good subcommittee meeting of the odds subcommittee, which I thought was very helpful. And my goal is to convene another meeting of that subcommittee with a lot of the changes. We're in the process of, of fine tuning that ordinance. I would also stand by my earlier statement, which is the sooner we can get an odds ordinance on the books, the better. There, there are pieces in motion right now. And I think it's, it would be very helpful to be able to have a clear statement that if you are going to build housing in this town, it's going to have to comply with certain standards. Whereas under current statutes, we would have no control or very little, I should say. And that's about it, unless you have questions for me.
Yes, are there any questions of planning director at this meeting from county commissioners? Commissioner Gonzalez-Parver.
I have a question regarding the, the striping project on Cascades. I don't know if, if you know anything about it. I tried to read up a little bit on it, I just got more confused.
Yeah, that makes two of us. I wish, I wish I could be more definitive on what's going on. That thing has been going back and forth. I, I should, I, I will simply defer to higher pay scale for a decision. I will try to tell you what, let me try to get some information that hopefully is clarifying rather than confusing. If you have a specific question, maybe shoot me an email and I'll forward it along.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, if there are no other questions from commissioners. If, I, I thought in the beginning that I would mention that Brett had been appointed. But do you know if we would list him as absent prior to his swearing in from tonight's meeting in the vote recitations at the end of the resolutions? Could you look into that before?
I don't, I, I don't believe so because he hasn't been formally sworn in. So he, he's not seated yet.
Okay. And then what time were you planning on the odds meeting? Special planning meeting on the 29th? Do you have a time?
Well, given that we have all commissioners here tonight, of whom four have already indicated that they are able to attend, let me throw that question to your commission. If you would like to start it a little bit earlier. What I've seen is typically, you know, a two to three hour timeframe. When you start getting into these really heavy technical topics is, is typical for, for really maintaining focus. So if, if, for example, you wanted to move it up to six, if that worked better. And then, you know, figure it'd be done at nine. But yeah, I'd, I'll happy to do whatever your commission wants.
Well, I see Commissioner Green, you probably have a preference for the start time. Is that correct?
You know, this morning at eight o'clock, I was with some Ukrainians. The day I was with Canada, the end of the day was Israel. If I started, I won't be able to start at six o'clock. It would not be, I wouldn't eat. So it's just not possible. Seven o'clock is pushing it for me as it is. So please, I'm available on the 29th, not earlier than seven. And hopefully not much later than 10.
All right, is everybody else okay with a 7:00 PM start time?
Yes.
Great, let's, let's start at seven then. Thank you, Commissioner Green. Thank you, everybody. We, if there's no other questions for the planning director, I want to go to commissioner comments and requests. I have a follow up about the 19 Broadway. I understand that there's a temporary sign outside there now that is rather large. And I just wanted to get some feedback. I think it might be a, a notice about availability of, of jobs or something like that. But it was actually brought to my attention that it was quite large. And I would like you guys to look at that a little bit. It's right on. Other planning commissioner comments or requests? And maybe we have a motion to adjourn coming. Look at this, it's just after 10. I feel like we have like hours to go before we usually adjourn. Commissioner Green.
Those that we adjourn.
Okay, there, well, second.
Okay, motion for goes so second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you, you guys are the greatest.
Night, night, you guys are crazy spectacular yourselves.